Let the records reflect that we convene with all members present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pugilor in peace to the five of the United States of America and to the three quality for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note that Robert Cattinello is absent and excused, out of the country today. May I have a motion for the minutes of March 12th, 2012?
I move the meeting minutes.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, roll call.
Mrs. Sukamoto.
Yes.
Dr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Links.
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan.
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale.
Yes.
And please note if you're looking at your agenda, the minutes for February 27th have been pushed to the next meeting of May 30th to be approved. I have motion for executive minutes of March 26th, 2012.
Mayor, I move that.
Second.
Second.
Discussion was an executive, roll call, vote please.
Mrs. Sukamoto.
Yes.
Dr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Links.
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan.
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna come down below first before we do the other comments. Come on up. John Hamilton? Now, these are two people you probably have read a whole lot about, but may not recognize them now, especially now that it's a couple of weeks later. For those that get mix all alerts, or obviously follow local news, or even watch the Channel Two News at 11, heard about a rabid fox that was out in the neighborhood of Madison. Caroline here had, you know, was, you know, talking about there's always the right time, the right place, the right time, there's also the wrong place at the wrong time. Caroline had the pleasure, if that's the right words, of being there as a fox came out of nowhere, thought it was a cat, and tried to shoot it away, if you understand, and lo and behold, it was attached to her ankle. As she called for help, ringing the doorbell, banging on the door, a fine neighbor heard what was going on, John Hamilton. And I bet you a lot of people, as they heard this news, stood there and thought, how would I react? I'm not too sure how I would have reacted, if I had dialed 911 and said, you know, do whatever you can to get rid of the fox. But John didn't even think twice, as he went to get the fox off Caroline, and then basically stunned it by throwing it in his car. And his help came on the way.
Try to ignore it, just keep working. No contest.
And I see a little bit of the bandage left, so you saw in the paper it was quite a bit more initially. And of course, as you follow the news, the fox was tested and was found to be rabid, so you could both even go through quite a bit of shots and everything to recover. But here you are to tell the story and recover from the story, so I want to, one time, be here. But we probably saved a whole lot of other people from being hurt. John, for not even thinking twice, to step in. Caroline is graduating tomorrow, so here's a gift from Berlin, Madison, to thank you for taking one for the town. And then we have something new, it's called the Mayor's Award presented by John Hamilton for heroic effort on behalf of the residents of Madison, 2012. Good job. Do we have any regular, okay, any photo? Thank you. Thanks very much. Also Chief Lou DeRosa. House of President, Chief Sukamoto. Uh, yes, we should do the resolution, thank you. I've got a motion on a resolution.
Yes. Mayor, I move Resolution 127-2012, that is the resolution of the Borough of Madison confirming membership of David Watts in the Madison Hook and Ladder Company Number One.
Second.
Discussion, all the favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Welcome aboard, and I understand you're a student from North Carolina, South Carolina, so welcome to Madison. I have a big goat from Long Island. In the end, like, I'm a South Islander. I, David S. Watts.
Hi, David S. Watts.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform.
That I will.
Faithfully and impartially and justly.
Justly perform.
All the duties of volunteer firefighter for the Madison Hook and Ladder Company Number One.
All the duties of volunteer firefighter for the Ladder Company Number One.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will true, bear true faith.
And I will true, bear faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And the governments established in the United States.
And in the state.
And in the state.
I'm the authority of the people.
I'm the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, and welcome aboard. Thank you very much. All right, a resolution. The proclamation for Borough Madison to recognize the National Police Week, May 13th through May 19th. Whereas, the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officer Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas, the members of law enforcement agency for the Borough of Madison play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the boroughs. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties and responsibilities of hazards and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency. And the members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the men and women of the law enforcement agency of the Borough of Madison unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore I, Robert A. Conley, to the Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the Guardian Body, call upon all citizens of Madison to observe the week of May 13th to 19th, 2012, as Police Week, to commemorate law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their stinkful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Madison to observe Tuesday, May 15th, as Peace Officer Memorial Day, in honor of both law enforcement officers, who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community, or have become disabled in performance of duty. Let us recognize and pay respect to our survivors of fallen heroes. On behalf of Engler, Jean Barrett, John Raffner, and Richard Duke, some of you at least? This is a recognition for part of Madison, another one of things that really makes Madison great, there are communities across our county, across our state, across our country, with Madison's size, but there are some things that make Madison very special, the fact that we're a university town, the fact we have a great downtown, and the fact that we have such culture in our midst, culture that feeds our downtown and feeds everyone. So on behalf of the Borough of Madison, I have a proclamation recognizing 50th anniversary of the Shakespeare Theater of New Jersey. Whereas, the Shakespeare Theater of New Jersey is one of the leading Shakespeare theaters in the country, and the longest-running Shakespeare Theater of East Coast, and has made Madison, New Jersey, its home for the past 40 years, after moving from exit zero. The part date came May, directed 142. Whereas, the Shakespeare Theater serves 100,000 patrons and students annually, and contributes to local economy each year. And whereas, under the leadership of artistic director Bonnie Monte, since 1990, the Shakespeare Theater of New Jersey continues to receive critical acclaim for its world-class productions and commitment to arts education, offering a variety of programs for students, educators, artists in training, and the general public. And whereas, the Shakespeare Theater of New Jersey was named the Regional Theater of the Year of 2002 or 2006 by the Star Ledger. And whereas, in 2002, the theater was awarded prestigious strategic partnership grant in the amount of $1 million by Geraldine H. Dodge Foundation in recognition of artistry, achievements, and leadership of this acclaimed Madison, New Jersey-based performing arts and education organization. And whereas, the outdoor stage, an open-air amphitheater located on the campus of the College of St. Elizabeth in the Morris Township, debuted as a performance space in 2002, where production presented each summer in one of the only theaters of its kind in the United States. And whereas, the theater, in support of Drew University, undertook a complete renovation and expansion of the found theater, and in 1998 opened the state-of-the-art F.M. Curti Shakespeare Theater, the permanent home of the Shakespeare Theater of New Jersey's annual main stage season, which runs from May through December. Now therefore I, Robert A. Conley, Mayor of Borough Madison, on behalf of the Guardian Body, hereby extend congratulations and best wishes to the Shakespeare Theater of New Jersey on reaching its 50th anniversary. Congratulations. Just a couple other things, one, I think we'll hear from other council members, but this May Day was a tremendous one. It's amazing how, at least as bad as October was with that terrible storm, we were able to turn the, what was generated from all the yard waste into new life in Madison. And it was a lot of hard work, and as I mentioned today, probably a whole lot of Advil was consumed that night after carrying everything around. I also had a resident come in today, this is a magazine that many of you probably do not subscribe to, Fire Chief Monthly. But, but in there is an article, What Are You Waiting For?, and reasons for, reasons abound for introducing compressed air foam into your fire suppression arsenal by Chief Lou DeRosa of Madison. So we congratulate Chief Lou on being a public safety officer. Also, I see some people here from Woodland Road neighborhood, I know we've had some issues as far as communication on some of the construction there, we apologize for that, we continually work with the contractors, and communicating with our neighbors, and trying to deliver the best possible service, it doesn't always work. So, we apologize for that, and we will continue to make sure that our contractors raise to the level of service that we expect from our employees in town. Also, later on, under resolutions, there will be a resolution appointing Matthew Jacoby as acting Borough Attorney. Matthew has been covering the meetings for the last three meetings, in Joe Mazaka's absence. Joe Mazaka has been ill and is, got a long road to recovery ahead, and we appreciate Matthew's service and covering. Matthew's service will be, appointment as acting Borough Attorney is through the end of the year, and we ask that everyone keep Joe Mazaka in their thoughts and prayers. And with reports, may I have the public safety from Jeannie Sukamoto?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. For public safety, the Operation Take Back program on April 28th was a huge success. The police department collected approximately 130 pounds of prescription medicine out of our neighborhood and water supply for proper disposal. We thank the Madison Police Department, MASA, and all the residents who participated. The annual Pfizer 5K run to support Project Community Pride is scheduled for May 23rd at Gerada Farms. We would like to invite the public to participate and support Project Community Pride. Also, for finance, included in the consent agenda this evening are two resolutions on tax appeals for council approval. To improve transparency, starting now, all major property tax appeal settlements will come before the council for approval. And lastly, I would recommend that we always try to go above and beyond when we communicate with our residents. I have two recent examples to share with all of you today. For the Orchard Street project, even though we're only required to notice all neighbors within 200 feet, I believe it's important that we inform the entire neighborhood to get input. I am glad to see many of the neighbors here this evening, and I thank all of you for being part of the process. For the Green Avenue reconstruction, even though our past practice is to notice residents when construction work is to start in their area, and not when it's deferred to the future, I believe it's just as important for us to inform residents when we change our plans. And needless to say, our residents found this past practice unacceptable in this case, and asked us to do better. Mr. Cody is setting up a meeting with the Green Avenue neighbors, and this neighborhood meeting is certainly a step in the right direction to rectify our lack of communication. I hope these two examples will help us better communicate with our residents in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Utilities, Dr. Esposito.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On Wednesday evening, May 16th, there will be a meeting of the Electric Utility Study Committee. Some of the topics that we'll be discussing will be the recent and future procurement of our electric wholesale, as well as the automated meters program. Also, tomorrow evening, on the planning board side is our bimonthly planning board meeting, there's one case to be heard, which includes a tenant who is interested in some of the old Blockbuster store on the east side of town. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works Engineering, Mr. Links.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All the most, he's gone. Gave us a ton of money this year. Thank you all. We are back to our twice-a-week pickup of rubbish, so may I first make sure you get out, may use of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Finance Borough Clerk was covered. Community Affairs, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a bunch here. First, from the DDC and Chamber of Commerce, like the mayor said, May Day went exceptionally well, there were over 900 volunteers, all projects were completed. A May Day after-party was held at the Ambulance Corps, which was sponsored by the DDC and the Ambulance Corps. Special thanks to Mara Johnson and Lisa Ellis for the help in organizing the event, as well as all the groups and volunteers that donated time, money, and energy, it really went well, and if you look around town, you can see it. The Chamber of Commerce held Ladies Night Out this past Thursday, they said it was a great success, and thank you to all those who helped organize the event. And finally, a green fair was held, a few, about, I guess, almost about two weeks ago. It was a partnership between the Madison Boy Scout Troop Number 25 and the Madison Environmental Commission. Over 500 people attended the event, and over 50 vendors participated. This was the third year for the event, and they expected to continue. Recently, I had the opportunity to attend a Madison Arts and Culture Alliance meeting. I know one of the reasons I moved to Madison was because of the culture, the arts, everything that this town embodies, and I was very impressed with the people that were there and all they do. So, starting now, I'm going to report on this group at each council meeting. They sponsor a lot of events, one of them is, or upcoming, they call themselves MACA, M-A-C-A. They partake, they provide the entertainment at the Rotary Family Festival, which is going to be held May 31st to June 3rd. The Madison Artist Studio Tour, which is going to occur on June 10th. The Jazz Fest at College of St. Elizabeth is June 16th. And the Farmer's Market, MACA, will have a monthly musical, music interlude. In regards to the Artist Studio Tour, over 22 artists will be showing their artwork at approximately 10 venues around town, maps will be sold. Oh, here it is, there will be a community art project at reception at Salvatore, Mendari Salon at 5:30, and all are welcome. The Senior Advisory Committee, I can't, I know I've talked about them a lot, and I continue to encourage anyone who has elderly parents or friends, seek them out, they are a wealth of knowledge in regards to what services this town has to offer for senior citizens. Right now, they are co-sponsoring the annual summer seminar series with the library, which is financially supported by the Friends of the Madison Public Library and the Friends of the Madison Senior Center. There are a number of events, which I'm not going to read off right now, but if you go to the library website, you'll see them all, it's worth taking a look. Okay, and finally, from the Rotary, I mentioned before that the festival will be taking place, it's held at the open space adjacent to what is, used to be the old Ryson property. It is going to be taking place on Thursday, it starts Thursday, May 31st at 5:00 p.m., and it's held with, it's a joint effort between the Rotary Clubs of Madison and Florham Park, so everyone should try to attend that. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Very good. And Health and Public Assistance, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a news release that will be out from Flo Rice, who is the registered nurse at the Health Department. There's two important health screening events that are offered to Madison, Chatham Borough, and Chatham Township adults in June. Adult men are encouraged to attend the men's cancer screening on Monday, June 4th, starting at 6:00 p.m. Both men and women are encouraged to check their heart health at the adult health screening on Wednesday, June 6th, 2012, starting at 8:00 a.m. Registration for these programs is required, you can call 973-593-3079, extension one, on weekdays. Madison residents are charged a non-refundable fee of $25 for the CMP blood tests payable within the registration period, there's no charge for the men's screen, men's cancer screening. The screenings are offered by the Madison Health Department in their offices at the Madison Civic Center, 28 Walnut Street, with parking behind the building. Entrances through the glass doors on the side of the building, and down the stairs to the offices on the right. All residents of Madison, Chatham Borough, and Chatham Township may participate annually in either screening. Participants should have their physician's name, address, and telephone number ready when they call. I would encourage all of you to take advantage of this wonderful service that we're getting from our Health Department. And you probably are all very lucky, and you got this on, you're sitting on your chair, it's not that I'm pushing this, but I'm pushing it, okay? This is a rain barrel workshop, which we are, is really presented by the Whippany River Watershed Action Committee, of which we are a member. Madison Borough is a member of this, this really great committee. Rain barrels are, you know, environmentally the way to go. So, you know, please join us, we're going to be at Memorial Park down on Rosedale Avenue from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00. Rutgers Cooperative Extension is coming up, they're going to bring all the barrels, they're going to bring all the tools, and this should be a lot of fun. So the cost is $60 a barrel, we're asking you to pre-register, but if you can't, and you have the free time, come on down, anyway. I wanted to talk about Patriotic Celebration Committee, which I am the liaison, we've been meeting, and we had a very special meeting on May 8th to talk about the Memorial Day Parade. The grand marshal this year is Jerome Bud Holtzman, so we're very excited about that. And it is May 28th, and it starts at 9:00 a.m. in the morning. There's going to be a parade ceremonies at the War Memorials up in James Park, and then with the wreath laying and whatever, and then we come, the parade goes down Main Street, and ends at this building, at Hartley Dodge Memorial, where there'll be another concert by the Madison High School Band, and Mayor Conley is going to read Orders of the Day, I think he just found that out, but.
Always ready.
So, and, you know, it's a wonderful, very solemn day, and I've been very impressed with the gentlemen who have been working on this for months, so, you know, please remember to join us. Thank you, that's all, Mayor.
Communications and petitions?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor and Council received one email from Deborah Starker of Beverly Road regarding the Rotary Clubs of Madison and Florham Parks Third Annual Rotary Family Festival, it was an invitation.
Thank you. A slight change for the agenda that was posted outside the room was slightly different than the agenda you might have seen online, if you checked earlier today. We will have three agenda items for discussion, the third one is the Orchard Street Affordable Housing Development, which will be presented, so that'll be number three. So this opens up the first of two invitations for discussion from our, from the public, and for those that are new here tonight, we have such a nice crowd. The rules are for this first one, you only can comment on items on the agenda for discussion, and that includes update on DDC programs, the discussion on amendment to Chapter 217 related to construction noise, and the Orchard Street property, I think what I will do with that one is, we'll have the presentation, discussion from the council, and then we can also open it up for questions from the public. So, though you can comment, we'll allow some questions after that presentation, so we can get some feedback. And the other thing you can comment on at this point are any resolutions listed for introduction, not introduction, listed for tonight on the consent agenda. So, anyone wishing to be heard? So, anyone wishing to be heard under those rules, please step forward, state your name, your address, and the item you wish to speak on. And again, later on, there'll be a general discussion time that you can discuss anything, any topic that's not on the agenda.
Mayor, you might want to mention that Resolution One Thirty-two had been removed.
Thank you.
And we have added Resolution One Forty-one.
So One Thirty-two is electric, uh, American Electric Testing. That has been removed. And, um, we have One Forty-one, which is the, uh, a resolution on a settlement. We can discuss that just prior to the, uh, items. All right, seeing none, I close this section of the meeting, and time for, are we ready? Is everyone here to do the DDC presentation? Eric, welcome. Eric Range, our Chair. Bob, yes, thank you.
While Jim is getting set up, I just wanted to mention something. I asked for this item to be put on the agenda. Um, since being elected to council, I'm, I'm liaison to Community Affairs, and one of the groups that I work with is the Downtown Development Commission. What struck me about them was not only the pride they take in their work, but the ownership in their work, the transparency. You know, when I moved into this town about twenty-some-odd years ago, I was struck by how nice the downtown looked. And, you know, I heard, well, you know, there's this group called the DDC, which, you know, helps do that, and I never really knew a whole lot about them. But what I come to find out is there are a bunch of volunteers, and Eric's going to probably talk about this, they raise their own money to do this work downtown, and we all benefit from it. Um, when you look at the new alleyway signs, the clock, that's all their work. So I wanted to give them an opportunity to get up here in front of everybody, get on the TV, so to speak, and let people know what they're about. I think this is something the town should be very proud of. We're far ahead of a lot of other towns. So, Eric, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'd like to take this opportunity on behalf of the DDC for the invitation to speak this evening. Uh, my name is Eric Range. I currently serve as Chair of the DDC and have had the pleasure of serving on the DDC going on, I think this is my eighth year. Um, so I'm, I'm one of the longest-serving DDC members at this moment. We have several other of our commissioners. If you just want to raise your hands, um, from all facets of the community that serve on the DDC as well. Um, so what is the Downtown Development Commission? Uh, we were founded, um, through an ordinance by the mayor and council in nineteen eighty-one. Uh, and we help merchants, residents, and the nonprofit community uh, with several events throughout, uh, the town, uh, as well as a number of beautification projects. Uh, we have taken kind of a unique spin, um, as Councilmember Landrigan said. Uh, we use little to no taxpayer money, um, no direct funding. We do get some support from, uh, the Police Department and from the DPW and other council, uh, departments, uh, to execute some of the things we do. Uh, but the money that we come out of pocket is all raised through many of our fundraising events, but our fundraising events are also there to support, um, our other mission items. We, uh, partner with, uh, several other organizations that we'll get to in a moment, um, to do those fundraising events, and those fundraising events are, uh, again, part of our mission. I mean, and see, some of the things we do here and some of our most recent things, uh, we are the, uh, the primary coordinators of May Day, although that is a community-wide, uh, event, but it is volunteers that come through the DDC that help coordinate that and help coordinate raising the funds for that. Uh, and again, those are funds that go directly back into town. Bottle Hill Day, which is a great time, uh, twenty thousand folks from both inside Madison and outside Madison get to come down, see what our town is all about, and visit our beautiful downtown. But the other great thing that Bottle Hill Day does is raise the most money every year to help support the rest of the DDC's mission. Uh, last year, and Jim, you can correct me if I'm wrong, thirty, about thirty thousand dollars uh, was raised through, um, the work, uh, that's spearheaded by Lisa Ellis uh, and others, uh, during Bottle Hill Day. And that then gets turned into things like the new alleyway signs, um, to promote, you know, ways to find the parking that no one thinks exists in town. Uh, go through those alleyways, and I promise you, there's parking back there. Um, things like restoring, uh, the clock, that was a recent project that the DDC undertook. Actually, two of our members, uh, with the help of DPW and the Electric Department, actually restored that clock themselves, um, instead of spending eleven thousand dollars to have the clock guy do it for us. So there's lots of things, um, and because of the expertise that's on the DDC that we're able to do, uh, on behalf of the borough, without the borough having to spend tax dollars to do it. Who are we? We are eighteen, uh, eighteen commissioners. Uh, we serve three-year terms. We are appointed by the mayor and approved by the council. Uh, and we actually come from multiple, uh, facets, uh, of the community. Uh, we do meet the third Thursday of every month, and those are public meetings. We're actually right next door in the committee room, uh, and we welcome public comment and public discussion on, uh, everything that we're doing. Our organization, uh, we do have, uh, kind of a hierarchy. Our current executive board is listed there, uh, along with our two public officials, and we have several, uh, subcommittees. Obviously, the scope of work that we do doesn't happen by just a few people, uh, so we have some great event committee chairs, uh, that really spearhead the, the individual projects. So you can see those there. Um, and what makes the DDC probably as successful as it is in all of the things we do is the structure is designed, um, to have representatives from multiple facets of the community. We have a representative from the planning board. We have Lisa Ellis from the Board of Education. Uh, we have university representatives, uh, and representatives from the nonprofit, uh, sector. We have a representative from the Draw the Farms complex. Uh, we have landlords and merchants, as well as, uh, residents, uh, who all participate, uh, and they all come from various backgrounds, uh, from PR to engineers to small business owners, uh, who can all kind of weigh in on everything that we do and not really come at it just in, in one, one section. These are the events that we do. Many of them, uh, we partner with other, uh, other groups. For instance, the Taste of Madison is a shared fundraiser between ourselves, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Rotary Club of Madison, and that's always a fantastic event, uh, that raises thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars to support those organizations. Uh, as I said, we do May Day. We do the Farmer's Market downtown. Um, about five years ago, we started doing the Drew Town Tour. Four years ago, this will be the fifth year, right, Carla? Yeah. Uh, we started doing a Drew, Drew University Hometown Tour, where residents and members of the DDC and business owners in town actually take, uh, the entire freshman class from Drew University and walk them downtown and show them all the great things, um, that the downtown has to offer, all the little merchants, all the secret little spots that took me when I went to Fairleigh Dickinson four years to find out, and thank God I stayed here to live, because otherwise that would have been useless information by the time I found them all. Um, so it's, it's really a great way to tie the university in, uh, and get the students kind of downtown, and of course, Bottle Hill Day. Um, just some photos of, of some of the great things that we do. We have great partners who work with us, uh, this year, the last two years, the Taste of Madison's been at the Park Avenue Club, um, and they've been fantastic in helping us achieve our goals. Uh, May Day, which has already been spoken about, successful for the many, many years that it's been, uh, going on. The Farmer's Market, you know, this is something that has been kind of growing and changing every year that I've been on, uh, the Downtown Development Commission. Uh, it's been at the high school. It's been downtown. Um, and this year, we're really excited, um, to extend the season. Uh, this year, we're going to be doing some time on Waverly Place, where it's been the last two years. Um, and then, as we move into fall, we're actually going to be moving it a block, uh, up the street to Green Village Road and have an opportunity to get some of that great produce and stuff that comes later in the season, uh, apples and, and things like that, and we'll be on Green Village Road near the museum for the last, uh, I don't know, I guess, six weeks or so, uh, ten weeks, uh, the last ten weeks of the market, and be able to extend the market again, uh, and, and serve not only the residents, but a separate set of merchants and, and things down at the, uh, other end of town. So we're excited about that. The University Town Tour, we talked about. Bottle Hill Day, again, um, wow, that's a picture of Bottle Hill Day, the year I was born. Uh, then and now, uh, and then I think I took that picture of, uh, of the now from the top of the Burnett Building, so, um, you know, it's been a, been a great, great evolution of Bottle Hill Day, and as I said, really serves as our, uh, our main fundraiser and really supports all of the things that we do downtown. And so with all that money and all those great events, uh, we partner with, uh, various groups and various folks in town. Uh, several years ago, we bought the gum buster, uh, for the borough, uh, and allows the, at the time, the brand-new sidewalks that went in to be better maintained and cleaned. Uh, if you go to lots of other towns, there's gum wads everywhere. Uh, we actually take care of that and make sure that our sidewalks and our downtown look great, so the merchants can be proud of their space and improve, um, their spaces. Uh, the Madison Avenue Direct Shuttle is a new initiative, uh, this year, uh, one that has been talked about since, I think, the first time I walked through the doors of the DDC, and that's a shuttle service that actually serves the three universities and brings them downtown and down to the East End, uh, so they can actually have access to all of the great things, uh, the students and faculty at the university that the town has to offer. Uh, some of the other more physical improvements we've done, um, at the Waverly Trussel and now at the, uh, Trussel on Prospect Street, installed new lighting, made that more inviting. Uh, again, the concept of that being kind of a Great Wall of China that divides some great parking spots from downtown, making that more inviting to walk through, uh, particularly at night. Working with the Historic Commission, got approval for more historically accurate lighting fixtures than what was there, and had, um, the Electric Utility install those for us. We talked about the restoration of the clock, uh, that Brad Kramer and Craig Arizuma undertook, uh, kind of on their own with, with some parts and a couple of free afternoons. So, uh, we're happy to see that back. Uh, as, um, we coordinate with, uh, J and M to see the island, the New Traffic Island, uh, on Lincoln Place gets planted. Uh, they actually do that several times a year for us, uh, as kind of a beautification of that space now that that restoration is done. And just, just a few weeks ago, we finally took signs that looked like they belonged in Seaside Heights and finally got them down, um, and kind of went to kind of the black and, uh, black and steel of a more historically accurate sign, uh, for all of our alleyway signs to make those, uh, easier and more identifiable for folks using them. And some great upcoming projects that we have, um, Lincoln Place will be installing, uh, wrought iron, uh, tree grates around the trees to kind of provide a wider walking path, uh, and also, uh, disability access, uh, to the new sidewalks on Lincoln Place, so we're excited about that. Uh, Bob mentioned about MACA. We will be partnering with them, uh, in two thousand thirteen, I guess, at this point, um, to bring some, uh, local art and display it downtown uh, in a way to kind of make Madison more of an art destination. Uh, and we have some great, uh, new newspaper vending racks, uh, on order with a vendor, so we can kind of take the individual boxes that are kind of cluttered and kind of strewn mismatched all over downtown, um, and get them into a more historically accurate enclosure and kind of spruce things up and make it more Madison than the bright orange and whatever that's out there now. Um, so those are just a few of the projects that we have, uh, coming down the pike, so we're very excited about that. These are just some of the folks that we partner with to accomplish all of those things, because obviously, the eighteen of us, uh, can't possibly do it all. So those are some of our great partners. And this really goes to, the Madison Main Street Foundation really goes to the heart of the concept of us not, um, being funded by the borough. And this was, uh, a new project that we took on about two years ago, uh, started the process about two years ago, and this is very similar to, um, the Shade Tree Management Board and the Friends of the Shade Tree, uh, Madison Shade Tree, uh, the library and the Friends of the library. Uh, a separate five-oh-one-C-three organization, um, that has the ability to do different things to fundraise as a borough entity we may not be able to do, and then also make those deduction, those donations tax-deductible, which we wanted to, uh, offer as well. Uh, it also allowed us to hire, um, a staff person that was not necessarily a borough employee, and Laura Cole, who's a Madison resident, um, has held that position for about a year and plus now, and has done an absolutely phenomenal job helping us get our, uh, our goals accomplished. And again, helps with sponsorship solicitation and improves our chances of applying for and getting certain types of grants. Um, and that's a little overview of what the DDC is and is doing, and we are always looking for additional volunteers, um, for all of the things that we do. Uh, as I said, there's eighteen of us on the commission, but, um, there's, there's work for a lot more than that. So, uh, if you're interested in, um, helping with anything you saw here or thought, think of a great project that you'd like to, uh, have us initiate. We'd be happy to, to chat. You can get, you can reach us through the borough website, uh, and they can get you to where you need to go. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if the council has any.
Questions or comments from the council?
Thank you for doing a great job.
Thank you. And I didn't stick to my five minutes. If anyone's ever been to a DDC meeting, you know we're not good at sticking to five minutes on anything, so. Great, well, thank you very much.
Stay up here, and I'll ask all the, uh, DDC members in the audience and any past members in the audience, please come forward. And Bob, yeah. I want to, I want to thank Bob for putting this on the agenda and, uh, asking Eric to do his presentation. That's proclamation, I promise. But this is a very deserved one. This is just, uh, the tip of the iceberg. Eric talked about the eighteen people that serve on the commission, so this is about half of them. But if you're, if you talk about a multiplier, this is a multiplier. Main Street USA is not the healthiest, uh, place. Main Street, Madison, Jersey is, because we really worked hard to make it happen. The effort and fundraising they do, so we don't have to use tax dollars to support it. And the other one, which is incredible, and there's a statistician in the audience who made me figure out this number, is through the records, the amount of volunteer hours on an annual basis that are generated. Uh, just quickly in my head, this is pick May Day, for example, a thousand volunteers for four hours. Four thousand hours of volunteer service in a half a day. That is incredible and couldn't happen without the efforts of these volunteers. So, thank you for everything you do, and here is the last proclamation. In recognition of the volunteers in the Downtown Development Commission, whereas for over thirty years, the volunteer commissioners of the Downtown Development Commission have been working diligently to study the future of downtown district in regard to economic growth, and whereas the commissioners, the past and present of the DDC have advised government body of Madison, including many councilmembers, members, and members, on suggested improvements to the downtown, and whereas the commissioners of the DDC have coordinated many successful annual events that benefit the entire town, including Bottle Hill Day, the Farmer's Market, May Day, the Drew Town Tour, and whereas the commissioners of the DDC have partnered with many local organizations to promote the downtown, including Museum of Really Crazy Facts, the Madison Arts and Culture Alliance, the Rotary Club, the Chamber of Commerce, the Garden Club, and local schools at all levels, and Madison elementary schools for our local universities, and whereas through their diligent efforts, the commissioners and supporters of the DDC have raised nearly a half a million dollars in the last ten years, and whereas the commissioners of the DDC have invested all those funds backing the downtown, annual flower baskets, streetscape improvements, economic studies, parking science, new alleyway signs, Waverly clock repairs, trussa lighting, marketing materials, and other valuable improvements, and whereas the commissioners of the DDC tirelessly promoted the concept of Love Madison, Shot Madison, the importance of supporting local businesses, and creating a vibrant downtown. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Cowan, Mayor of Madison, and the past the government body, to hear, hear my thanks and thanks to past and present commissioners. to hear my thanks and thanks to past and present commissioners of the Downtown Development Commission, as well as local merchants and all the volunteers that have supported the DDC effort for their continued dedication and better little borough. Congratulations. Thank you.
Amend Chapter 217 Construction Noise. This is Carmela Vitale and Bob Landrigan.
This agenda recommendation is an amendment to Chapter 217. Shall I wait? Okay. Amendment of Chapter 217 of the Borough Code to revise the hours and days when construction and demolition activity can take place. As you probably know, we have recent zoning approvals for construction that are adjacent to residential areas, such as the New Walgreens on Main Street and Greenwood, the old Verizon Building, and the former Bank of America on Greenwood Avenue. Many complaints were received regarding after-hours construction activity at the former Verizon Building especially. So, over the few, last few months, we took into consideration those complaints. The current rules allow construction and demolition seven days a week between the hours of 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM on weekdays and 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM on weekends, and after those hours based on the decibel level of the work. Chapter 217 of the Madison Borough Code regulates noise in our community. Article B.3 regulates construction and demolition activity excluding emergency work as follows. Work shall not be performed between the hours of 6:00 PM and 7:00 PM on weekdays or between the hours of 6:00 PM and 9:00 AM on weekends and federal holidays unless such activities can meet the limits set forth in Tables 1 and 2 decibel levels. All motorized equipment used in construction and demolition activity shall be operated with a muffler. At all other times, the limits set forth in Tables 1 and 2 do not apply to construction and demolition activities. Bob is going to finish the presentation with a survey that was taken of the towns surrounding Madison and their ordinances, and then our recommendation to amend Madison's current ordinance will be shown.
Okay. What we did was, we said, rather than say, okay, Madison, we're going to do this, we took a look at some other towns. We went to Ray Cody and he was good enough to reach out to fellow administrators. We started out with towns immediately around us. And you could see that many of them either prohibit work on weekends or severely or strictly limited. We went further out and we saw that that's typically the case. Weekend work is prohibited, they limit the time that people could work during the week. Whereas Madison, you could effectively work 24 hours a day, you could work after 6:00 PM just as long as a noise was in certain limits. What I can tell you was this, when I first moved to town coming from a city, at night it is very quiet around here, so even a piece of equipment working with a muffler, you hear it. It's not pleasant and we, like Carmela mentioned, there are a number of other construction projects coming down the road and we wanted to minimize the impact on our residents. So what we're proposing is this. Monday to Friday, work from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. That's consistent with other towns. Saturday, 9:00 to 5:00. No work should be allowed on Sunday and no earthwork at all on weekends, which means no heavy equipment moving soil. Exceptions would be allowed and that would be for a uniformed construction code official. However, if he does grant that exception, the public would be notified, and that's key. So this way, you know, late at night, if people hear a noise and I'm saying, what is that, and the town does get hit with a lot of phone calls. It's fair to the residents, but you also have to be considerate of the people doing the work. In summary, the proposed changes to the Borough Code address the current concern of the residents in close proximity to current and future construction sites. Exceptions will be permitted, but only after approval by the borough of Madison. This way contractors can't go in there at their own discretion and work whenever they want. And while it limits the hours of construction, it's consistent with our neighboring communities. We want to keep Madison a place where people want to build, want to move, so you have to be, at least competitive or be consistent with them. You don't want to be too restrictive. So we feel that this accomplishes all those goals.
I'd like to make one other comment. We did receive a lot of complaints, especially in the Verizon Building, the old Verizon Building. There will be another construction or reconstruction going on down in Greenwood, which really is adjacent to a lot of residential homes. So we want everybody to know we listened, we heard you. And Bob and I sat down because a couple of weeks ago, we looked at an agreement for this particular project on Greenwood Avenue and realized that we were just like giving away the store at this point. So, you know, rest assured, we heard you, we're trying to do something, and that's why we're requesting to amend this ordinance.
So, questions or comments from council? So next step, we'll draw it up for the next meeting of May 30th for introduction.
Okay.
All right. Well done. Thank you very much. All right. Madison Housing Authority, ready? Welcome, Lou Ricchio.
Good evening. It's good to be here. Since the renovation, odd as it may seem, I've been here probably hundreds of times since 1981, but this is the first time since the renovation. Great job, absolutely. I'm here tonight to talk about our development on the corner of Orchard Street and Strickland Place. This is a development that we've been contemplating and talking about for years. Even before the borough assumed ownership of the property, we had talked to former mayors and administrators about doing something on that site. What we have come up with this evening is a joint effort between the Madison Affordable Housing Corporation, the Madison Housing Authority, and Morris Habitat for Humanity. Morris Habitat for Humanity, we have several members from Morris Habitat. We have with us Blair Bravo, the Executive Director, and Liz DeCoursey, the Director of Operations. We also have with me this evening numerous members of our Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority and the Board of Trustees of the Madison Affordable Housing Corporation. I want to thank them all for being here, as I want to thank all the public for being here. I'm glad we were able to get notices out in time, late last week, notifying the residents in the area, those within 200 feet and those even beyond that, so they're aware of what's going on. I know there has been a lot of discussion over this development and in the vein of complete transparency and openness, I'm glad everyone was able to make it here this evening. This is a joint community effort. I've worked with Morris Habitat in the past. Currently, we're just finishing a six-plex in Summit. And when I say a community build, in Summit, it was an interfaith build where a lot of the churches and synagogues got together and generated $300,000 in donations. In Madison, we're looking at it as a community build because we want the residents of Madison, the neighbors and everyone else. Pick up a hammer, swing by, come and swing that hammer and pound some nails. You'll see me and my staff there once or twice. I have 10 thumbs, so I'm not really good, but I take direction well. But I invite everyone to come up and help us. What we're trying to do here, as we've tried to do in other areas working with Morris Habitat, is provide the American dream for homeowners. We hope to do this here with the three houses that we're going to talk about in a few minutes. Chris Kellogg, who is the architect for this development, is also a board member, as am I, on the Morris Habitat Board. And Chris has really designed three outstanding units, homes for the site. All of the units will be built in accordance with all existing zoning requirements, setbacks, side yard, there will be no variances. This is a first for the Housing Authority. I can tell you, since 1981, we've been developing affordable housing and this is the first time, we haven't come on bended knee asking for a whole host of variances. We've tried to hear some of the concerns of the residents in the neighborhood, we've listened to council members, and had several meetings to discuss how we're going to develop the site, and I think we've done a pretty good job. What's also interesting is that one of the units, while we're going to try to meet whatever the COA regulations are at the time, and only God knows in the courts, I guess, what they're going to be, but one of the units we're going to designate specifically for a Madison resident. Whether or not we get credit is almost immaterial, but I think it's important that we give back the community as we've done in the past. All of our public housing has a residency requirement, both our senior housing and our family housing. And while COA doesn't allow residency preferences, we thought at least one of the three units should be. So that's another first for us. It's important to note that no tax dollars are going to go into this development. As everyone is aware, there are about $450,000 in Affordable Housing Trust funds available for this development, but as you may know, none of these funds came from the taxpayers of Madison. All of these funds came from developers who are building homes or apartments or doing renovations in Madison, so that we can happily say that there are no tax dollars going into this development. The Habitat model is unique. It's unique in a whole host of ways. Many developers will build a home or an apartment, they'll sell the home or rent the apartment, and they're out of Madison. And they turn their back and that's the end of it. And hopefully the homeowners will maintain their unit well, or the renters will take care of their apartments. Dealing with Morris Habitat, it's a totally different environment. Morris Habitat doesn't walk away. Morris Habitat assists the families initially when they apply for the units. They review their incomes with the families. If their credits need assistance, if their credits need to be bolstered, Habitat will work for them. In addition, each family is required to put in 300 hours of sweat equity on their home. That is a lot of time. Most of the families who are working families have to take out time on their weekends and vacations to put in that 300 hours, but that's an important factor in the Habitat model. And it really gives the homeowner true ownership. They get to see the windows going in and the roof going on, the sheetrock being spackled and taped. In addition, once the homeowner is selected, Habitat doesn't walk away, they're the mortgage holder. They hold a 0% mortgage on these units, so that the homeowners, many of whom would have a difficult time getting a mortgage, maybe in the open market with today's really tight credit requirements, Habitat will give them a mortgage at zero interest. So then Habitat's around for 30 years, and why are they around? They're around to make sure that the homeowner maintains the unit, they're around to make sure that the homeowner pays the mortgage. And I can say happily that Habitat has never had a foreclosure. Of all the units they've developed over the years, the past 25 years, they've not had one foreclosure. And that says a lot for what, how they work, how they operate before, during, and after the homes are sold. It's difficult to continue to extol the virtues of Habitat. I'm on the board, I've seen firsthand, since I've come on the board, what a great job they've done. I've worked with them twice before and looking forward to working with them again on this development. Okay, here we go. I know I didn't have to work this. There we go. As I said, the address has been changed a little bit. I always refer to reality, the three building lots are 13, 15, and 17 Strickland Place. What we propose is to build affordable housing for local residents and to improve the neighborhood. Any of us who've ever driven by that corner know that just about anything is going to be an improvement. We're up there now doing soil samples, additional soil samples, because where we're going to be dumping some of this toxic soil, they want to have assurances that the level of toxicity is not too high. Most of it is going to the Hackensack Meadowlands, I must say. We've acquired the property, the Housing Authority and an nonprofit bid on the property back in October, I think it was, and we purchased the property at that time. We're going to be remediating the site. We're spending approximately $400,000 to clean up the site. We're hoping we can save about $100,000 of that by using the Hackensack Meadowlands to take the soil, but it's still going to cost somewhere in the area of $300,000 to $400,000. We hope to start that process at middle of the summer to late summer, and I can discuss the schedule in a little while. We're going to build three single-family homes and then they'll be sold to income-eligible families. This is just one of the projects, developments that we did with Habitat. This is a duplex in Morristown. Here is another entrance to the six-plex at Morris Avenue in Summit. Habitat does quality work. Here are two photographs of what the current property looks like. Here are two more pictures. There's a dilapidated garage with some of the neighbors sent me some photographs last week, and I want to thank them for sending me these photographs because as bad as it looked, when I went to see it, the photographs really brought out some of the problems with that old garage. What's funny about the garage is it sits partially on our property. Even though it's owned by an adjacent homeowner, it sits partially on our property, so we have contacted the homeowner and asked him to either demolish it, because it's just about to fall down, or we'll demolish it for him, we'll remove it at our expense. But whether we demolish it now, when we start digging in that area, we have to go down nine feet for some of the remediation. I'm not sure that is going to withstand the remediation work. Here is what we plan. It's a, I tried, I think I mailed out all of these to everyone who lives within 200 feet of the development, and some of them were available this evening. There's a large board up here if anyone wants to look at it. But there are three single-family homes. One is a Victorian style, one is a colonial style, and one is a gambril style, which refers to the roof lines. They're all three-bedroom, two-bath homes. They meet all handicapped accessibility requirements, and by that I mean on the first floor, by state law, you must have a kitchen, a bathroom, and a room that could accommodate a bedroom if in the future you need it for a handicapped individual. It meets all of those requirements. In addition, my board was very adamant about a garage. They felt very strongly that in today's economy, even moderate-income families usually have one or two cars. And since these are three-bedroom units, we have a garage there which will accommodate one car, and then one would be parked, of course, in the driveway. They're approximately 1,200 square feet and they're, in my opinion, and I guess I'm biased, they're beautiful, beautiful homes. The first one, the Victorian, I'm setting that aside for a Madison resident. It has a wraparound porch, it's got the largest lot, it really is the model. When you drive down Orchard Street, you will see it from the side, and when you make that turn on Strickland, you can see the front, and it's really a beautiful unit. And the other two will be sold by Habitat to income-eligible families. Here is just a close-up of what the Victorian will look like. Here is the colonial. And this is the gambril. Typical first floor, as I said earlier, you just walk in the front door, and on your right will be a door that goes into the dining room or the, what we call, future handicapped accessible bedroom. On your left will be the living room, and behind the living room will be that bathroom, and to the right will be, as you can see, is the kitchen. Off the kitchen is a door that goes out, and there will be a patio on the rear of each one of these units, which will extend from the back door in the kitchen all the way across the entire width of the garage and back approximately, I think it was 18 feet. So it'll be about 15 feet wide by 18 feet deep. This is a typical second floor, up the stairs, there is three bedrooms, another full bath, a large walk-in closet. I won't say it's very fancy, but it's, I think, a very good design. I think Chris Kellogg was able to fit a lot into a small area. Additional information, as I said earlier, the existing dilapidated garage at the corner of the property needs to be razed. Yes, it probably will be razed, one way or another. Habitat will select all the eligible owners, with the one unit being designated for a Madison resident. There will be a deed restriction on each one of these units, so there aren't any windfall profits. Each of the units will have a 30-year deed restriction placed upon it, so that when and if there is a resale, it can only be resold to another family who is income-eligible. And that's important because I, if the houses go for $150,000, in reality, what they're worth, okay, on the open market, is worth, okay, on the open market, is probably $550,000. So we wouldn't want someone to be able to turn around in a year or two and just sell them. So for 30 years, there will be a deed restriction on them, and the homeowner will only be eligible to receive the cost of living increase on the unit every year. And last but not least, the big item is the 300 hours of sweat equity that the individual homeowners will be required. I think Madison, once again, is in the forefront of affordable housing, and being able to provide three homes to individuals, fulfilling their American dream of homeownership, is to be applauded. We did this once before on Elm Street, 27 Elm Street, where we built five condos, which were considerably smaller, and that was a great success. All families are still living in those condominiums almost nine years later, and we also see this to be a great success on Strickland Place. I want to thank the council for their support, your financial support, your encouragement throughout the entire process, without which, I'm telling you, we never would have accomplished as much as we have. And I'll take any questions.
One quick one. Income levels as far as eligibility?
The income levels, as you know, there are ranges.
Yep.
Now I need my glasses. Okay. We are in Region Two. Region Two, according to the Council on Affordable Housing, is Morris County, Essex County, Union County, and Warren County. And for a family of four, the range goes from as low as $45,350 to as high as $65,000. For a family of six, these are three-bedroom units, and you might have six people in there, it goes as high as $75,400. I see most of the families being in that four-person household, so it can go as high as $65,000.
It's a very impressive project, and I often talk about the things that make me proud to be part of Madison, what the Madison Housing Authority and the partnership has done over many years is one of those things, that we do have affordable housing that sets a bar high for neighboring towns. Comments from...
Yeah, well, certainly, thank you for the presentation. Certainly, very impressive and very complete presentation. Want to express our thanks to Chris Kellogg for providing the architectural work, and this is certainly a great partnership to improve our community in that neighborhood. Thank you for showing us the photo of today and the envisioned future. Can you expand on, you talked about the income level for the potential homeowners. Can you expand on what type of family, from either your experience or from Ms. Bravo's experience, so to raise the comfort level of our neighbors, so they know what kind of neighbors they can expect in the future?
Well, for instance, in Summit, where there are six units, they're the most recent homeowners, we're getting people who work, who are hospital workers. You'll get people who work in the hospital, people, we've had teachers, early teachers who have just gotten their jobs as homeowners, families who are working in the downtown stores. The Downtown Development Commission should know that many of the people who work in their stores don't live in Madison. They don't even live in Morris County. Many of them are living in Pennsylvania and commuting. So you get a lot of those families who would love to live in Madison, moving into Madison. The Madison, I'm hoping that the Madison resident is someone who's lived here their entire lives, is now just starting out with their family, and would like to remain in Madison. But those are the kind of people that move into Madison. We don't normally get people who are moving in from far away. I can tell you that. When we do, we ask for, we suggest people submit applications, we receive applications. We're not getting a whole host of people from areas outside of a five or 10-mile radius. I mean, people have always said, well, what does your waiting list look like for public housing? And it's amazing that we have most of the people from Morris County, a few from Union County, but very, very few from Essex County or from any other county. It's just localized. And why is that? This is where people's comfort level is, and people don't want to move outside their comfort level. And if people who are living in where I live, I live in Essex County, if that's where my family is, I'm not going to want to uproot my family away from the rest of my family and move even to a great community like Madison. So that doesn't happen a lot.
Lou, can you also talk about energy efficiency in these units?
Chris Kellogg should be here to talk about that. Chris is Mr. Energy Efficiency himself. All of the units will be Energy Star rated. All of the appliances will be Energy Star rated. There'll be thermopane windows. There'll be extra insulation in the walls. Habitat is big on energy efficiency. Why? Because it saves the homeowners money. We want to make these units, these homes, as economically efficient as possible, and as, you know, so that it doesn't cost them a lot to live there. And they're going to have to pay the utilities themselves, as well as taxes in mortgage and insurance, so we're trying to keep the costs as low as possible. And we will make sure that they're as energy efficient as possible.
Can you also cover an approximate timeline for this project?
Habitat, right now, is very busy, and that's a good thing. I mean, so they've got a lot going. So we've kind of postponed construction until either late fall, if they could fit us in, or early spring of 2013. That's why when we talk about the remediation, because these units will have full basements, we think it's a waste of money to dig out the soil, which we have to go down some areas nine feet, and put the soil back and then dig it out again for the basements. So what we'd like to do is kind of time things, to finish all the remediation, maybe two or three months before we start construction, before we start the foundations. We hope to begin either early fall, I mean, late fall this year, or early spring next year, and then it'll be about a 16-month construction period. So that occupancy at the earliest would be the end of 2014, middle of 2015. So we're not talking about tomorrow. We are talking about a year and a half to almost two years from now.
You mentioned earlier that there will be no taxpayer dollars for this.
Correct.
Can you expand on about grants and other money that you're getting from the county and from the state to cover?
Sure. This development all in, the remediation, the cost of the land, is about $1,001,000, $1,100,000, give or take a few dollars. The Housing Authority has received a $100,000 grant from the county. We're currently have applied to the Federal Home Loan Bank for a $60,000 grant. We have an application into the State Department of Energy, I'm sorry, Department of Environmental Protection, for a $200,000 grant for the remediation. In addition, the nonprofit has already paid for the land, so that was $250,000. And Habitat for Humanity is through their in-kind services, well, they have a shop grant for $60,000, I believe that's going toward this, and their in-kind services are almost $400,000. When you add it all together, it meets the total dollar amount that we need, with a minor exception, and that's the Housing Trust Fund. The $450,000 the Borough has from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund will make up the shortfall in whatever we need.
As you know, that the council passed a resolution a while ago, I don't even remember which month, about four months ago, is that right? Three months ago? Three, four months ago, to release the trust fund from the Borough to the Madison Housing Authority pending approval of the site plan.
Yes.
I think our next step is for you to bring back the full set of documents and present that to the council. Any idea when you can have that available?
I'll discuss with whoever wants to discuss exactly what you mean by a full set of documents. If you mean construction documents, that will be a while. We have a site plan right now that's been completed by the engineers, which shows everything. And I would be more than willing to present that to Bob Vogel, who could make a recommendation to council.
Would that work, Ray?
I can have that to him this week.
Yeah, we certainly don't need construction documents.
Okay.
Carmella?
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of comments. I sat on this council when the decision was made to take that property up in Orchard, and it was an absolute disgrace that anything looked like that in Madison. And one of the biggest problems that we had was the remediation. And this project actually is saving the Borough. When Lou talks about $400,000 worth of remediation there, I believe it, because there was all kinds of stuff going on there with oil and gas and whatever. So, you know, I applaud you, you know, for doing this and making possible, you know, I'm a Realtor in my real life, so I believe in the American dream, and everyone should have the opportunity to own their own home. There's nothing better than that. And you just go to Habitat for Humanity Gala, and you see the people that are just experiencing, finishing their 300 hours, and being told, okay, here's the keys. There's, you know, it's a very emotional, it's a wonderful experience, but, and Chris Kellogg has done a beautiful job, you know, very impressed, you know, with his design, of course. He's, you know, he's a Madison resident, and he's built that wonderful solar energy house and whatever, but, you know, thank you very much for doing this. Appreciate it.
Quite welcome. Other comments or questions from the council? As mentioned, I'll break a little bit from the agenda. If there's anyone in the audience has a question or comment, please step forward.
I want to have a question.
Okay. Gene, you have to step up to the...
I'm not supposed to speak from here.
No, Gene, we have to get you on the...
Pretend to walk.
All right, Gene, if you want, I'll repeat the question if you want to ask it.
The question, I'm on the total cost, all the cost related, if was that property up in the middle, there can be another construction, which will... And then the three properties will be sold. How does it all balance out? Do we even recover the money from the sale price, or is this a substantial...
So the question, so we get it on the tape, is with all the costs of acquiring and so on, how do we cover it? Do you fully...
100% of the costs are covered by grants from different sources. The three homeowners, okay, buy the units, but Habitat for Humanity holds the mortgages, so that there is no proceeds received from the sale of the units, from the sale of the homes, so that the $1 million that it'll cost to build this and clean up the site will all be raised or has been raised through grants and in-kind donations.
So if it involves buying the properties, you say a mortgage is involved, that still means that purchasing the property...
Correct.
Does the purchase prices come anywhere near the total cost of the project, regardless of where the money came from?
No.
So again, the question was, do the purchase prices cover it and...
The purchase price is approximately...
Two and a half?
One quarter, one-third, one-third of the total cost.
The income from the sale of the properties will cover about one-third of the total cost. Do I turn it that way?
No, no, because the income we receive, just for example, if we sell the units for $150,000 apiece, it's $450,000. That does not offset any of the construction costs, because that $450,000 is not received by us. It is a mortgage that's held by Habitat. Habitat holds the mortgage, so they get monthly mortgage payments. We don't receive the $150,000 as a lump sum. If these individuals went to a private bank, we would receive $150,000, but since Habitat holds the mortgages, all they receive is the mortgage payment every month.
I apologize. I still don't define an answer in my department here. My question, I'll rephrase it, they could be an under review. There would be a total expenditure cost, irrespective, and many, many sources will provide this money. By the time the project is completed, and people will be, it will be eligible, people will move in, there won't be a total cost.
$1.1 million.
For all the units?
Correct.
And the buyers will pay, have you heard of that?
Yes.
So it's a wash?
Yeah, I think, so I don't want to, we don't want this back and forth, going back. So the, so through, in-kind, through Habitat grants, the trust fund, you basically, money in, money out, the, if I understand correctly, also, the Habitat holds a mortgage, which they can then reinvest in future projects elsewhere. And just also, so the tape, and we have an official, questions were asked by Gene Zipper of Greenwood Avenue, he's lived there a long time. Thank you. And I think we had a hand up in the back.
Jeff Sarrett, I'm on 33 Rachel Avenue, just in the Orchard, a little further. I've been before the council quite a number of times about this property, and I'm very happy to see that we're finally going to be getting some remediation and something that looks like it's going to fit in with the neighborhood. My concern, and just want to get some clarification, is during the construction itself and during the remediation, what is going to happen in regard to fencing, in regard to the fact that Strickland's a very narrow street, and I understand a lot of dirt has to be removed, so that's a lot of dump trucks that need to come in and out of the neighborhood. Currently, while it's not pretty, there is sort of a sidewalk, and kids do go to Torrey J right down the street, so I'm curious, will there still be somewhat of a sidewalk or some kind of path there? Will it, how will it be shielded from both the neighborhood's view, as well as protecting so that children can't continue to get into the property, because presumably you're going to have to do something with the fence that's there when you're digging? So that's really my first question. Sort of secondarily, I'm just curious myself whether or not the utilities there will be buried. I know there's overhead lines going into that neighborhood, but whether those will be buried. And lastly, again, just out of curiosity, the, how the ratables work with those properties, and we're going through a reassessment now, obviously, if these homes are going for one-third of market value, I'm curious how, that's the only thing that, it sounds like the town is affected by, and it will not be receiving the same amount of taxes, or if you can just explain that, just so we can understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Okay, to answer your first question, we will do everything we can to shield the neighborhood. The fence will be repaired, replaced, whatever's necessary. Right now, it's got a lock on it, we're making sure that no one goes in and out of it. There will be substantial number of dump trucks, because we hope to move at least 20 truckloads of dirt a day, or more, depending on what the Meadowlands will accept. What we will do is we will kind of bring the dump trucks in one at a time. We're not going to have them just sit there and block traffic or block the street, because it is very narrow. In terms of the sidewalk, we'll make sure the sidewalk is always clear, whether it's clear of dirt or rocks or whatever, we'll make sure there'll be a, what they call a construction pad, have stones, so when the trucks come and go, most of the garbage will be left on the stone and not on the street, make sure that happens. The remediation will be fast. I don't think it'll take, our engineers think three weeks. My contractor tells me he thinks he can do it even less time, as long as the Meadowlands will accept as many trucks as possible. If they limit it to 20 trucks a day, it might take the whole three weeks. If not, he can do it in half that time. In terms of the utilities, I can't answer that question right now. I have not seen the utilities there, but if I can work with the electric company here in Madison, they seem to be like, they're okay people. Mike Piano and I will talk about that, about putting the utilities underground. And in terms of the ratables, whenever a home is sold, if it's a new home, taxes are based on the market value, and that's the price of the house that's sold. So yes, in reality, the individual will be paying full property taxes, but it's property taxes based on the, not the market value, but on the sales price. So while it might, the house might be worth $650,000, the taxes will only be based on how much they paid to have that house, to buy, purchase the home, or $150,000, whatever.
Which is, the fact that it was Borough-owned property, it wasn't paying any taxes.
Correct.
And we took it in a tax lien, so it has, we haven't seen any money from that in quite a while, so it would be an improvement. I think we had a hand up in the back. Come on, please step forward.
Hi, I'm Janelle Marchese. I live at 12 Drew Place over in the Orchard. Thank you for listening to us, first of all, and putting three houses there as opposed to the 10 units originally. I have a couple of questions. I actually have a cousin who would probably qualify. She has her and her husband and her two kids, would love to live up near her family, but she currently lives in Florida. Is she eligible to apply, or does she have to be a state resident? How does that work? And also, now, I know these houses are going to go for about $150,000 each, is that going to affect the market value of... to go for about $150,000 each, is that going to affect the market value of my house, which is around the corner, a four-bedroom? Is that going to be used as a comp for my house kind of thing? And how would that affect?
I must be getting old because I have to write down the questions now. But, yes, your cousin, you said it was?
Yes.
Okay, she would be eligible. When we advertise, and there will be a massive advertisement, we have to by law advertise in the region, so that we'll send out notifications to the newspapers and you'll see it, it'll be in the Madison Eagle, I can guarantee you that. And when you see it, you can ask her to call us, we'll send her an application and she can apply, absolutely. In terms of property values, it will not affect your property value because it has a 30-year deed restriction on it. And any assessor will look at the property and say, yes, I see what the market value is, but with a 30-year deed restriction which controls the amount of property can be sold for, it substantially reduces the value of that property, which will not have any effect on your property because you don't have any deed restrictions. Thank you. Anyone else wishing... Your cousin could put her name on the waiting list now.
It's probably huge. It's probably huge, really. He gets close every single day.
Good evening, I'm Joe Santoro, 26 Rachel Avenue. And first of all, I want to say, I think there's a wonderful plan. I'm ecstatic about it. It's really terrific. You know, I just want to thank you all, the members of the council and the mayor, for listening to us because this has been a blight on our community, it's been there for years, and the council and the mayor and the staff has really done a terrific job, terrific project job. I just have one quick question, and this sort of harkens back to some early presentations about the property itself. There was early discussions about whether some of the poisons had leached from this property onto neighboring properties. And initially, there was some discussions about having to monitor surrounding properties. Now, I don't recall hearing or reading as to whether that was actually correct, whether it did in fact leach onto any neighboring properties. So I just wanted, you know, to get that out there for any people that are concerned. Thank you.
According to the engineers, Hatch Mount McDonald, who did all of the environmental work on the site, they did 45 different test pads and samples around not only the interior but around the perimeter, and they have said there was not any leaching off-site, that most of the contamination was in two areas. And it, to me, is kind of strange, but one area is right where the concrete pads were, and that I can understand, that's where the trucks were parked, that was a lot of garbage was dumped, we're finding asphalt, that where we thought it was like six or seven inches thick is more like eight to 12 inches thick because they used to dump it, roll it, and we just compress. The other area, which is very strange, is at the far eastern end of the property. And right, there's a row of trees that runs perpendicular down the site. Just past that row of trees, we found one of the worst areas of contamination. And it's in just one area, and if you know the site, there's a curb cut right in front of that. So what we think, we can't prove it, of course, but we think is that someone, and we've been told who, but someone was backing their trucks up onto that site and dumping. And they dumped in one location. So it's funny, where we have to dig two nine-foot pits is in that one location and the pad, and everywhere else is a minimum, a maximum of two feet. That very, there's very little contamination across the entire site, it's just two areas. And that's what cost the most money, those two areas.
Lou, regarding that, if I may, ask you to communicate with the neighbor immediate adjacent to this. I know that she had lots of environmental concerns regarding this property. It would be nice, I see that she's not here this evening, but it would be nice for you to personally reach out to her.
I will do that. I will, I will call her on the phone and let her know that from everything we've been able to study and everything we've been able to see, there's been no contamination leaching off this site.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing none, close this part. Thank you very much, Lou.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And I will get that to Robert tomorrow or Friday at the latest, and he can report back to the council at your next meeting.
So we can...
Have a resolution?
Have a resolution approving it based on the site plan that we courtesy review. Thank you, and once again, Project is proud of us. So another Madison Proud moment. How many towns have a discussion on affordable housing that ends with a applause? I think, thank you all for your dedication. All right. Ordinances for hearing.
Okay, the ordinance scheduled for hearing was introduced by title and passed on first reading at a regular meeting of the council held on Monday, April the 23rd. It was posted and filed according to law and copies were made available to the general public requesting the same.
I call up ordinance 5-2012 for second reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance 5, 2012, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 195, Article 5 of the Borough Code entitled Land Development Ordinance of the Borough of Madison to amend the zoning map to include Block 2803, Lot 2, which is 10 Maple Avenue in R3 zoning district.
I open this ordinance for hearing. Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 5-2012.
I second it. Council discussion? Seeing none. Vote.
Mr. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Okay, this is our second invitation for discussion. Now, the rules are relaxed a little bit. You may step up to the microphone, state your name, your address, and you may speak on any topic, not necessarily on the agenda, but again, we ask you that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Is anyone else, anyone wishing to be heard? Carmen, I see your hand first.
Nobody signed it, nobody signed the sheet. Do I have to sign it too?
Yes, you do, and we'll... Uh-oh.
Makes you special, Carmen.
I think I forgot to remind people of that rule. Thank you, Carmen.
Carmen Pico, 81 North Street. My comment is only about the new turf fields. This past weekend, I had an opportunity to umpire two-girl softball games there. And to my amazement, there was also a field hockey, not a field hockey, a lacrosse game going on at the same time. So I just want to thank the council with all the problems that they had getting it approved. That was probably one of the best decisions that the council had made for the children. Because there's an awful lot of children in town and they need a safe place to play their games. As an umpire, when you umpire on a dirt field, it raises havoc on your feet. I was able to do two games on the turf field and still had enough energy left. If I had to do a third, I could have did it. So what I'm saying is that was, that was a good thing that we did for the children and also a good thing for an umpire. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Kathy?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good evening all. My name is Kathy Solu and I live at 71 Ridgedale Avenue. And I'm a member of the Friends of the Ridgedale Avenue Historic District. I'm here today with, this evening, with some of my cohorts, the Sapios, Margaret Weiss-Gerber, Dan Seidel, my husband John. And I wanted to formally introduce us to you. I believe you all received one of our packets. We've worked very hard on this packet. I wanted you to know that those folks that are living on Ridgedale Avenue have concerns that we've been sharing with each other for a couple of months. Mainly, we have traffic concerns which affects our quality of life. We have safety concerns regarding traffic for our children. We have, of course, you all know, we have Central Avenue School and we have the high school. We have the Madison Recreation Complex, we have the garden, and now we also have concerns around the access road from the Exxon property. So we have noticed through the years, I'm a 33-year resident on Ridgedale Avenue, Margaret, I think, what did you say, 40-some-odd years? 45 years. So we are maybe not the scientists that you would need to study how the traffic has increased, but surely we can anecdotally say that it has. There's a great culture of speed on Ridgedale Avenue. And if you recall, in the packet, there's an essay on the fact that Ridgedale Avenue is a neighborhood. We know each other, we care for one another. We have, we've raised our children there. We welcome the children that, that are, we celebrate them when they win games at the high school. We love to see them out running for their practice on track. But we do have concerns. And so this group is willing to do the work that it takes to find some funding, historic preservation funding, safe street funding that would help us and the town with a project that's coming up for Ridgedale Avenue in two years, I believe. There's some road work and utility work that's going to be done, so this is perfect timing. We are also going to be celebrating our 10th anniversary as a historic district. What we've done thus far is we've organized ourselves, we've reached out to leadership in town, we've spoken to the various heads of departments, and we've spoken to commissions, and we know that we need to partner with others. So this is our first time coming. I'm sure in the next two years, you'll see more of us. And I have other folks that want to speak as well.
Kathy, we'll let the rest of the neighborhood go through and then we can make some comments as far as next steps.
Yes, that'd be great.
Well, the whole neighborhood doesn't have to speak, but we'll...
Hi, I'm Mayor and Council. I'm Margaret Weiss-Gerber and I live at 100 Ridgedale. We bought our home in 1967, a Victorian built in 1897. With three small children, traffic was a big concern to us and our neighbors. In 1973, a group of neighbors got together and met in their homes to discuss the traffic and the truck problems. Joan DeGraw, Anna McLaughlin, Helen Prentice, and many other neighbors. The group went door-to-door collecting signatures for a petition. The petition was presented to the council and mayor. Glenn Head was the mayor at that time. And the council voted to lower the speed limit to 25 miles per hour. Over the years, the speed limit was increased to 35 miles per hour. In April 211, the speed limit was reduced to 30 miles per hour with the help of Sergeant Keener. When we moved to Ridgedale 45 years ago, many students walked to school. Today, most students are driven. We have two schools in our area, Madison High School and Central Avenue. With the increase in school traffic and the development of the Exxon property, traffic has increased tremendously. Forty years later, we are still meeting, the neighbors are meeting, and we're discussing the traffic and the truck problems. This group came up with a name for our group, and we're called the Friends of the Bottle Hill Historic District.
I'll give you extra time, don't worry.
Must be a fire.
The chief is still here, so I'm taking that as a good sign.
I guess somebody's honked him for me anyway. I understand the police have had a hard time monitoring Ridgedale from Fairview to Park Avenue due to no shoulder. Ridgedale has a lot of foot traffic. We have walkers, runners, young mothers with children, and bikers. With a high rate of speed, Ridgedale is unsafe for most people. We hope you can help us with this problem by lowering the speed limit to 25 and monitoring the trucks that ride through our neighborhood. And we do have several large trucks that go about 3:30 in the morning every night. And we would appreciate if you could help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Lisa?
I'm only going to read half of what I have. Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Lisa Sapiro and I live at 69 Ridgedale Avenue. And that was my mother right there. And I grew up right down the street at 100 Ridgedale Avenue in a very old Queen and Victorian. And I was very lucky, I think, today, thinking about it, growing up and being exposed to the architecture and the design of an old home. And, you know, I have a large family, four children, and we moved to an older home on Ridgedale Avenue that was falling, not falling apart, but in, not in great condition. My husband and I purchased this home, walking into it and seeing the beauty of what was underneath. And thankfully, growing up in a home like that, we were able to, I was able to appreciate it. Still, yeah, 14 years later, we're still restoring this house. So a lot of time and money goes into these older homes. And I think that it's a certain type of person that is willing to live on this street. So we do put up with a lot because we love our street, we love our old homes. But I think what we're looking for with the help of you guys, we have a lot of great ideas, our group, we're looking to lower the speed limit, but we're also looking with this new repave and utility project coming up in two years, that we can work alongside with you guys and with all the committees and commissions and kind of input with our ideas and what we've come across and hopefully take what we have on Historic Main Street and bring that around the corner onto Ridgedale Avenue because it is, should be one continuous flow. And I think we're getting some new utilities, some lighting, and ideally, we'd love to see some beautiful lights like we have downtown and be thoughtful of our sidewalks when they are going to do them. And also, you know, listen, what I would like to see are some hanging baskets hanging as I'm driving down the street and some flags hanging. Ideally, that's what we would love to see. We want to make Ridgedale Avenue a place that we, most of us drive down Ridgedale several times a day if we have children. And when it turns to 25 miles an hour, probably within the next few months, I'm assuming that we're going to be driving down that street with the warm feeling of what we should be feeling. This is a historic road. We only have two historic districts right now, and we should take advantage and be proud of where we live. And I'm very proud of it. I've lived here for 40, Ridgedale, you know, I'm 47, so I've basically lived here all my life. And I've raised my children here. And we appreciate old Madison. And I think there's a little bit lost here, and I would love to see us all get together. We have Summer Hill Park that, this is the short term I'm talking about, but the long term is getting that Summer Hill Park and it is so underutilized. And I think that that is something, there's a lot of grant money out there for a historic, historic street, and Summer Hill Park is part of that. And we could work with a lot of those commissions and hopefully come up with some great ideas. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Hi, Mayor and Councilmen members. I'm Mike Sapiro, I live at 69 Ridgedale with my wife and family. Been there about 14 years, grew up, raised in Madison, my family, born, raised in Madison. My grandparents came over to Madison. And I love Ridgedale Avenue. We're not only trying to help Ridgedale Avenue, this is just a starter, but I think there's a lot of old places in Madison we want to try to keep alive, Maple Avenue, a few other old streets. It's a shame that a lot of builders come in and wreck and put in what I call prefabs. It's a shame that a lot of builders come in and wreck and put in what I call prefabs, just ginormous houses, like my kids would say, that are worth nothing. So, our intentions are to try to keep Ridgedale lower the speed limit, so we can keep our houses and our children wanting to go on the front porch or play in the front yards. When I'm working on my yard, I'm weed whacking, I'm so nervous when I'm weed whacking because cars are flying by me, like, and it's sad to say that the lady guy that passed away in Ridgedale, part of Ridgedale Avenue, he's come over. You know, it has nothing to do with us, but it's what's going to happen. So, we went down our street, and we spoke to, well, we didn't speak, but we went to every neighbor, and we handed petitions out and asked if they would sign. I think probably about 99% of the neighbors, the only few that might have been away or some that weren't home, didn't sign, so they would love us to try to drop the speed limit. That's only the beginning. I would love to make it a one-way street, that would be great, but I don't think that will happen, but we could put that in the making maybe. I don't know which way it'll go, but it'll save our street. And the other reason for the speed limit is because of the children. Every day, there's hundreds of kids that walk up and down our street. And just last year, I think it was, a child got hit right on Ridgedale, right at the corner of Walnut Street. A lady got hit on her bicycle down the end. Years ago, a friend of mine was killed in a car on Ridgedale Avenue. So, stopping this, dropping the speed limit will be great, but we have to enforce it. You know, you could put it at 25, but you know, people are still going to drive 35, 40, 50 miles an hour, but there's got to be a way we can try to put signs out, maybe have a police mayor, if we could put some kind of shoulder for them to sit on, so people see that and get used to it. But all's we're asking is if you could help us just to try the speed limit for now, drop it down a bit. And I have the petitions here, I'd like to leave Mr. Cody.
I really appreciate you asking.
Thank you. I've been a little nervous watching you with your weed whacking and those cars zip by there, so, that's a very good point. Anyone else wishing to be heard on Ridgedale, so we can, so, just on the short term, I heard two issues, and one was the speed limit, so we'll take that back to, we just brought it down to 30, as pointed out, and to see, you know, steps to take, bring it down to 25. And number two is the ongoing issue about trucks and the fact that it appears that there might be some middle-of-the-night trucks taking advantage of us dropping our guard, so maybe we can, more information as far as if it's a typical time, whatever, that we can get to the police department, so we can enforce the no trucks, as they should be going down Central Avenue as the county road. The long-term issues is, as we, as I pointed out, that step one is replacing the water main down Ridgedale and then reconstruction of the road, so we do have some major work to be done. And this could be a great example of a neighborhood and our staff here working together to look at what can be done, traffic calming-wise, and then take advantage of one of the neighborhoods that defines Madison, in fact, our oldest neighborhood as far as the overall average age of homes. And so, it, it is a historic district, what can we do to bring that out? So, those are the ongoing themes I heard, so we'll figure out a way to follow up. Don?
But thanks for coming in. I've known these people too much, the old historic, um, community. I would attack this a different way than you are at the moment. Firstly, needs to lower the speed limit. Last month, after I met with you, I made a, let's just say, I made an effort to open down Ridgedale at least 10 times a day. Multiplied that out over the last 10 weeks, I have a little bit of a feel for what you're going through. I believe you're right, we need to reduce the speed limit, but I also would prefer to put together a plan of action for the other issues that you have. To come in here and, and not be in front of the honestly, I'm, I'm trying actually to help you. It's easier for all of us if you have a plan of action. What do you want done? How do you think it can be done? And then ask the questions here. That's why I think we'll help you all move quickly ahead. The other part of the 25-mile zone of the nation may allow, it's a no-brainer. Okay, so, Ray, how long does it take, and what do we have to do to reduce the speed limit? And believe me, really, in my opinion, it's tough.
Yep, Jeannie, you, where you wanted to add something?
Okay. Some of you might remember that for many years, we had difficulty, obstacles, to reduce the speed limit, if you recall, because we had to go through different levels of approval. And based on the speed reading, we're never going to, we weren't able to get it through. But the state requirement had changed, if you remember, I guess probably a year and a half ago. That was the point, that we made the effort to monitor the speed, and we were able to reduce the speed limit last year. Some of you might remember that I worked with Sergeant Keimer, reducing the speed from 35 to 30. Our goal was to reduce that to 25, but we didn't want to get our proposal rejected by anyone, by doing it incrementally. So, our goal is to do the right thing, which is reducing it to 25. So, the police department is continuing to monitor the speed over there. And I assure you that, yes, I've been on that road with Sergeant Keimer many times, sometimes just standing there, watching all the trucks go by during the middle of the day, and I can't imagine what it's like in the middle of the night. So, we, we are actively working on reducing the speed limit. So, that one, we've done it once, we know what to do, to get that one through. In terms of the truck access to the road, I believe some of you might recognize that we have the improved signage, both at the Park Avenue end and also the Florham Park end. We have installed new signage on poles, no truck signs, and in, in addition to that, we have painted truck route pointing toward Central Avenue at the, near the MRC entrance. So, some of you might notice that. Now, that's one thing. Whether or not that the trucks actually follow the signage, that's another. As you know, that we have police officers, Officer Repka, who's very familiar with the neighborhood, he's putting considerable effort to monitor the truck traffic. Many of the times, he's there during the night. So, we pretty much, we, meaning the police department, pretty much know exactly who the offenders are. And certainly, that's something that we will continue to do. Now, the MRC construction has ended. I believe the situation has improved quite a bit because of that construction truck, they're no longer there. But yet, certainly, we see landscaping trucks. I think many of you have that complaint, that goes through the neighborhood when they are not actually servicing the neighborhood. We are aware of that, and, and they are being ticketed whenever that the police department catches them, I guess. But I think for long term, we have some goals here, the 25 speed limit. Now, as you know, those messages are very bulky and very large, and there's only probably the, the only location that we're able to put that is very close to the high school entrance. Now, we, we have in our budget, I believe that we are out to purchase the smaller ones that we can, they're portable, and we can hang it on any of the poles, on Ridgedale or anywhere, as a matter of fact, around town. So, that is one of the tools that we want to use to alert residents when they're really speeding. As you know, that all around other schools in Madison do have those signage, the, the portable speed limit signs, but we don't have one near the high school, so we're looking to improve that. And I will continue to work with the police department on enforcement issues, both during the day and at night. And what would be great is if I can actually get, instead of calling all of you, if we can get one contact number, perhaps an email of somebody that, that the police department can sort of like a liaison to the neighborhood that we can work directly with, that will certainly help us to communicate with all of you. And, and whatever we can do, if you want to have a neighborhood meeting, certainly, we can get a few of us together and join the neighborhood to talk about exactly, you know, make a plan forward, we certainly be willing to do that. And any other ideas that, that you want to move forward, we will certainly accommodate.
I just want to say thank you so much, and for all the signage, we have noticed the signs going up. We were also able to get the county to put a sign up for County Road 608 with a directional sign. So, we are moving along, and I'm thrilled with our partnership. And absolutely, anyone here that wishes to come to one of our meetings, we'll make sure we get an engraved invitation out. We're a lovely bunch of folks and enjoy sitting over, oh, oh, anything, I guess, a little wine, or a little coffee, or a little iced tea. So, it's a good bunch, and we do want to partner. That's, that's the main thing, because we love our town, we love our neighborhood, and we take very seriously the fact that it is the oldest neighborhood in town, and we want to preserve it, so, thanks.
I forgot about one more thing I do want to mention, sorry.
We want to, we want to try to avoid the, all, all good stuff, but we don't want to get into the, going back and forth.
And we are working with, with the high school as well, because that's a very important factor, as you know.
Don?
Okay, let me go back to the original question. Bear with me, I hear it will take forever. Ray, what do we have to do for those people in the town, effectively, quickly, and immediately? I don't want to retake. I've known these people two months ago, again, self-aware, right?
So, so we basically, the process for lowering the speed limit?
There are kids out there, the most things that it is, and not being insulting. What I'm saying is, do we have to act in a way for something very bad happens, or do we react to it now and fix it? I think it needs to be fixed. What do we have to do?
The speed limit was established by ordinance, so Jeannie alluded to it.
We will follow, we have done it once, and we will follow the same process.
Right. So, we would have to introduce an ordinance, reduce that. The other thing we may want to consider is our current ordinance allows for local deliveries, trucks of four tons or less, so we may want to also consider reducing the tonnage. Again, it's an enforcement issue, but if you're trying to get larger trucks off of that road, because it's affecting the house and the quality of life of the neighborhood, that's another thing we should explore while we're doing.
So, Jeannie will work, work with the police department on the, taking steps quickly on the speed limit, and also looking at the size of the trucks. Just one other thing that we can move on is, I've, Engineer Bob Vogel and I, a couple weeks ago, attended a Complete Streets workshop, and it's, it is a great program, and one of the best things that's coming out of it is the concept that should have been there a long time ago, and people have heard me, have heard me speak this. The attitude of the state before was, prove to us that you need to have a pedestrian element. And now, it's, you better prove to us why you don't have a pedestrian element. And so, as we work on redesign on Ridgedale, it's got to be for the bicyclists, the walkers, and number three in the list should be the cars. Okay, anyone else wishing to be heard on anything? James, James and then Don.
James Sullivan, 25 Rodri Avenue. I'd like to express my thanks to Mr. Cody and Mr. Vogel about working with me strongly, about getting the Woodland-Samson intersection smoothly transitioned, it is now paved, we're all very happy to have access to it back. And secondly, I'd like to send out my accolades to DPW for their swift repair on the broken water main that was on Kings Road, and they were out there and had it fixed in under seven hours, and for a crew of two and a half people managing 60 miles of pipe, that is rather impressive. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, James. Don?
Yeah, Don Brunner, 20 Reven Drive. I know the, a couple of members of the Borough Council have, have meetings with a couple of members of the Board of Education on the Green Village Road School. Can you tell us what these meetings were about, there were two or three meetings?
Basically, what we, we have is a redevelopment committee. Green Village Road School, and I'm glad you brought this up, because we had an earlier meeting today. Green Village Road School has been declared a zone for redevelopment, and so that puts the control very much in our hands, as opposed to going out to auction and not knowing who's going to buy it and have it fall on hands that may not be developed. So, we're working very closely with the Board of Education to maximize the value of the property. We went through a step one, which was a request for qualifications, and we had 14 responses to that, was narrowed, we narrowed that down to seven as far as round two. We, we sat down and interviewed those, and that has now been narrowed down to another level, where we'll go out and request for proposal. The request for proposal will be, we've got to work it through as far as all the details of the redevelopment. Earlier today, we had a little presentation, we called it Pilot 101, not to learn how to fly a plane, but it was payment in lieu of taxes, as a zone for redevelopment could be put automatically on the tax rolls or put as a pilot. The fact that it's in one way not on the tax rolls doesn't mean it's not generating income, it's just how the income is based. If it's property tax, it's based strictly on the value of the property. A pilot allows us to work with the developer, it would be based on the income of the property at some percentage level, so the developer would know what they would be paying out for the next 15 years or whatever the agreement is. So, that's all moving forward. We hope to have the RFP out later, in, by the summer, I believe, is our target, and moving forward to get the Green Village Road School property sold and back on the tax rolls in one way or another.
Okay. Are these meetings all an executive session, or any of them open to?
Yeah, they're, they are advertised, because we have a quorum of the council, as, Mayor and Council, that is sitting on this committee, but it is executive session, because it is a contract matter. So, as, as, as we go out, we quickly go into the executive to discuss the contract matters. It will, anything such as the, the pilot discussion earlier, that is appropriate for public, are, are brought out to the public. And as the RFP goes out, it'll be more and more information. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. Introduction of ordinances?
Okay, ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for Wednesday, May the 30th. It will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading, ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 6, 2012, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $90,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the abatement project at the Madison Public Library Adult Services Department.
Motion?
I move that ordinance.
I beg it.
Council discussion, and we have, I see people from the library for feedback.
I think we can make this rather simple. I have a couple of questions, I do this for Nancy. I understand the abatement, should I do them? May I ask one or two questions? Nancy, um, there's, hi. On this, it's $90,000, which is not shocking to me, but how much of the abatement, what is the total abatement though, of course? Is it just $90,000, or is it more than that?
Okay. If you don't mind, I have a little presentation. Is that okay? And I'll answer your question also.
But you want to do, if you can ask the question rather quickly, I'm going to save you a lot of time. You can go through it if you wish, but I'm sure I'll come back and ask the question.
That's fine. The cost of the project, the anticipated cost, is the $90,000. We presented this last fall as part of our long-range capital budget request, and we earmarked this adult services book stack area as the next abatement project. and we earmarked this adult services book stack area as the next abatement project that we felt was necessary, so we included the ninety thousand dollars, uh, January, our Buildings and Grounds Committee um, reviewed again the capital, the long-range capital plan, um, looked at it based upon safety, efficiency, new technology, et cetera, and we still kept this abatement project in the um, capital budget request, um, so we're here tonight to request the approval of the release of these funds, um, we are planning to do this in early fall, as you know, this would be a big process, so we need the time, we can't possibly do it during summer, because that's our busiest time of year, um, we anticipate using the same scraping process that we used last year in the Technical Services Department, um, and of course, the project costs, excuse me, will include the monitoring, the scraping, and the restoration, um, we continue to monitor, and just last week, TTI Environmental, uh, performed air measurement tests, and the results, which I just got back today, indicated there was no asbestos detected in the air samples, and our maintenance supervisor was sent for a HIRA training, and is routinely inspecting the building, um, maybe to answer your question, um, as you know, last year, last March, we did an abatement in our Technical Services Department, um, due to good project management, uh, and a timely receipt of the insurance proceeds, um, from unfortunately the hurricane damage, uh, the library was able to complete the asbestos removal and space remediation without using too much of the thirty thousand dollars that was appropriated last year in a capital ordinance, specifically for abatement, um, we have used some, and we are going to use about, we anticipate about twenty of the thirty thousand dollars, so we're suggesting that we reduce the proposed ordinance from ninety to seventy thousand dollars, um, tonight, Gary and I, and Tom, have sat down this afternoon and took another look at things, so if we could reword the old ordinance, which was twenty-seven, two thousand and eleven, and, and add to it, um, we think that would take care of the project.
I don't have a problem with the money, I don't have a problem with the abatement.
Okay.
I mean, I was saying over the last two years, fix it and get it covered, I mean, so, what we did was fix it out, and doing that, you have to come and see us every two, six months, four months, right? And you're coming here constantly, my point has always been, what does it really take to really do the job correctly? How much money, what does it take? It's not the ninety thousand, it really isn't, what I'm saying is, we never approach a problem with anything more than a band-aid, I mean, a band-aid, what I'm more interested in is finding once and for all, how much, what we have to do and fix the whole thing, period.
Okay. Gary, do you want to respond to?
I mean, you may not understand what I'm saying, I, I've, I've gone through, but it doesn't make sense to keep on a band-aid, in my opinion.
The thing that we, I just passed out to all of you, is this, basically the exact same matrix that we gave to you last fall, it shows the entire library, as it was analyzed by the Environmental Commission, or the Environmental um, Service that we engaged to do an audit of the building, you can see, if we wanted to do the whole building, it would be somewhere around one point one million, as we talked last October, though, we analyzed each area, the only area that we see that has any need for remediation is the area that we're asking for right now, beyond that, unless conditions change, we're not coming back for more.
All right.
So, to say that we're doing this with a band-aid, I, I kind of would disagree with that a little bit, this will take care of any issue that we believe is necessary.
With all due respect, I need that fulfilled, if you want one point two million dollars to fix it, I mean, we don't have it, I agree with you that, but you cannot tell me that we have a building that we fix it, I'm not making fun, I'm not making you a hard time, but you have one point two here, you want ninety now to fix this for a problem, but it's a problem when I, when I, I'm looking at, when I say, how they have, and I really fix the building, once and for all, I, I'll give you ninety grand, because I know the problem's there, where you have to fix it, but it does not ever, uh, through one point two.
Well, we did. Keep in mind that any building, whether it's this building, or any other building in town, has ongoing maintenance, and I, I, not to cut you off, I, from what I heard you say, and one of the misunderstandings about asbestos is a feeling, if it's there, you gotta get it out, and that is, that is a misunderstanding, sometimes the best spot for it is exactly where it is, and so if I heard you right, that his future cost is if we were to do a hundred percent asbestos abatement, but that is not necessary.
If you'll recall, we prepared this at your request, last summer, we discussed it, and you said, well, how much would it be for the whole building? This is our best guess at what it would cost for the whole building, we also gave you a five-year plan, that we didn't recommend, but it was a five-year plan to address the entire building, what we are now saying is, we've looked at it again, we don't see any reason to change our original plan, which is to handle the adult stacks and the adult storage, leave everything else in place, continue to monitor the, the air, we just came through with a, a, a clean bill of health, so to speak, there's no issues with health, for the staff, for the public, for anyone, this is an area that could become a problem, that's why we're asking to do it now, any other area that becomes a problem, we'll come back to you for sure, but we don't see anything unless there's a change in conditions.
I have no problem with that, Gary, but with all due respect, there are parts of these buildings that we're sitting in right now, that were never mediated, if we wanted to rent all these space in this building, and God knows, we have enough room to do it, and through you, modernize, and save you for holding the wall, you have a problem with this, that's why we haven't, we never did the right way in this building to the end, because we couldn't afford it, so, my point is, I, I have no problem giving you ninety grand, but I, I'm half a cent, half a drum, I don't know enough that you do it the right way one time, so you don't have to continue to store money in, if you're telling me that ninety thousand will get you further out, so be it, I have no problem with that, I'm concerned that will not address any long-term problems, that's all, don't worry about that.
As Nancy mentioned in, in her comments, uh, Tom Newson, who is our building superintendent, has been trained, and he has been monitoring the entire building asbestos, he's documented each area, and he's monitoring to make sure if there's a change, he lets us know right away, so the only area that we believe needs to be addressed is this one area, and we were discussing how to fund it, and we realized that we hadn't spent twenty of the thirty thousand from last year, and we thought that that would be an appropriate thing to do to commit that twenty thousand to this project.
Okay, uh, Bob?
Yeah, Gary, yeah, when I was looking at this, what I'm noticing is, it looks like the area you're picking is an area where people congregate more, a, a lot of the other areas that you're not asking for right now are primarily storage areas and closets, and if they're not contaminated, or there's no danger, why disturb it?
You, that's really not the reason, you're right, but that's not the reason that we have selected these, this, uh, two, these two areas.
Yeah, well, I remember when we looked at it, there was some water damage around it and all that, that's why it's vulnerable, yeah, I understand.
Carmella?
Gary, can I just ask you a question? Um, you have, this is done so nicely, okay, but you have repair needed, slight, slight, none, can you just kind of explain that, um, you know, in relationship, I, I'm assuming that, that's how you came to your decision, you know, but...
The slight and none categories were done by the auditor for us in its report, and they told us we didn't have to do anything.
As far as asbestos is concerned?
As far as it, yes.
Okay, all right, now I get it.
And all I did here was, when, when I was putting together this matrix, I wanted to be as clear as possible to reflect what the asbestos audit showed us, and in some cases, they said uh, slight repair, we looked at every area that said repair needed, and frankly, after we brought it to their attention that we didn't see any need, the auditors basically said, yeah, you're probably right.
Okay, so, what's happening here is that, um, you're green, there's no attention needed unless conditions change, so you've put a future cost in there, assuming that, you know, there's a problem with it, this is what it's gonna cost, right?
And that was based, Carmella, on, on what it cost us to correct the tech services area, it's our, really, our only baseline for guesstimate, we do have some estimates that were done last uh, summer sometime, last fall, for this area, and they're right in line with the calculation that we used at sixty dollars a square foot for remediation and repair.
I, I, I agree with Bob, I, I see asbestos all the time, and sometimes you just leave it alone, you know?
We, we've spent a lot of time trying to...
You know, you, you try and, you mess it up, and it, it becomes airborne, and I remember this adult, there, there's cracks and stuff in that, that particular ceiling, I remember that, when we took our tour, so, that's, that I can understand, but, you know, I kind of agree with Bob, that sometimes when you have something slight, you leave it, unless something happens to it, yeah.
That's the approach we're taking.
Okay, good, thank you.
Other comments, discussions? Jeannie?
Um, just to clarify what you said earlier, Nancy, and, and Gary as well, you said there are twenty thousand left over from um, a two thousand and eleven appropriation, so does that mean that you're, you're coming to us to asking, you're asking for seventy instead of ninety, or what do you mean by that?
That's what we are suggesting tonight.
So, the two, two-part thing, one is to amend the uh, the ordinance that appropriated the thirty thousand, so we can um, shift that money, and then change this one that's in for an introduction from ninety to seventy.
Seventy, right? Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, so we will uh, we'll, we'll have the, for the next meeting, we can do the amended on the previous appropriation, and we'll convert this to seventy.
Okay, the reason that happened, I mean, it's a, a plus and minus, both was the damage from hurricane, Irene afforded some insurance money to be used.
Okay, so, um, to make this cleaner, as my attorney just whispered in the ear, we'll probably do, just make it some, keep it at ninety, we'll, we'll cancel the previous ordinance, close that out, which frees up twenty thousand.
All right, leave a little bit in there, well, I'll discuss it.
All right, so we'll, we'll, we'll figure out the best, a, a, and just a reminder to the audience as far as the process, you know, we went through the whole um, capital budget hearings, along with the other uh, budget, so we approved a total general capital of one point three, that's only step one as far as capital, every project that comes up, we have to go through the ordinance, so the library will be back during the year for a few other things, we, basically, we budgeted a hundred fifty thousand dollars for library capital projects for this year, so we will see you again, and we'll, we'll make sure the next one, we will, we'll put this on the work agenda, so we have the, the proper discussion, not during the introduction, but prior to the uh, hearing.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else, uh, thank you, Gary, roll call?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ordinance seven, two thousand and twelve, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating eleven thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of four sets of firefighting turnout gear.
Mayor, I move ordinance seven dash two thousand and twelve.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
Discussion, seeing none, vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
All right, thank you, consent agenda resolutions?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion, any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds, any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, all resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
I move consent agenda resolutions are one twenty-eight dash two thousand and twelve through R one thirty-one dash two thousand and twelve, R one thirty-three, two thousand and twelve, through R one thirty-six dash two thousand and twelve, R one thirty-seven dash two thousand and twelve, as amended, R one thirty-eight dash two thousand and twelve through R one forty-one dash two thousand and twelve.
Second. Just to clarify, on um, one thirty-seven, it was posted as acting, so, so it was not amended.
So, we're good with that one?
Yeah. Okay, we have a, we had a motion and a second, discussion, or any that need to be pulled? Okay, seeing none?
I'll, I'll move it.
I thought, I think we're, we're all set, thank you.
One, one thing before we vote, Mayor?
Yes.
Um, full disclosure, I am the liaison to Madison Housing Authority, oh, we're not voting on that one today.
No.
No.
Ah, okay, that's for next, save it for next time.
Yes, we'll, you start mid-sentence next time, it can save a few windows, sorry.
Okay.
Both then?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Thank you, unfinished business? Vouchers?
Oops, okay, we have public safety at seventy thousand, seventy-five dollars, fourteen cents, health and public assistance, twenty thousand, seventy-seven dollars, forty-four cents, public works and engineering, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars, eighteen cents, community affairs, twenty thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars, two cents, finance and Borough Clerk, two million, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fourteen cents, and utilities, sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars, twenty-eight cents, total is two million, eight hundred and two thousand, one hundred and five dollars and twenty cents.
Move the vouchers for approval.
Second, discussion, roll call?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Under new business, I would like to make the following appointments to Sustainable Madison Advisory Committee, requesting council approval for one and two of uh, Madison resident appointments with a term expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twelve, Ben Wolkowitz and Sandra Gorin, for Madison resident three and four of six, with a terms expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen, Harriet Honigfield and Kathleen Cacavelli, and for Madison residents five of six and six of six, with terms ending, ending twelve thirty-one, two thousand and fourteen, Stephen Eget and Heather Shepherd, for council liaison, term expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twelve, Donna Links, for Madison Environmental Commission Representative, term expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twelve, Betsy Ullman, for non-voting Madison employee representatives, superintendent of Public Works, David Maines, term expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twelve, and the administrator or assistant business administrator position, Jim Burnett, uh, term expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twelve, and just to note that we have one more slot, which will be the Madison Public Schools Representative, we gotta close that loop, may I have a motion to accept those?
I move the uh, aforementioned appointments.
I'll second that, discussion?
Yeah, um, if everyone recall that during the discussion, when we talk about the establishment of the committee, that um, I mentioned that I would like to see representative from the various areas, um, in the area of environment, preservation, land use, energy, and ground writing, I think the Madison Environmental Commission did an excellent job, based on the resume that we're seeing here, fulfill all those requests, um, that I've mentioned, and um, I think these are great individuals to be appointed to the committee.
Thank you, I will commend Betsy Ullman on her uh, hard work, and um, it's another example of the great talent and resources we have right here in our community. Roll call?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito? Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Okay. Move to adjourn.
Second. Thank you all.